Good evening. I'm going to call this study session to order of the Fullerton City Council's successor agency. Ms. City Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Florrie. Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Great, thanks very much. Let's see, so we now would take public comment on the study session agenda item. If you have public comments on regular session items, those should be made when that item comes up during regular session. Or if you have public comments on non-agenda items, then that also should take place at the regularly scheduled meeting that starts at 6:30. But if there are any members of the public here this evening who would like to speak on this study session agenda item, please go ahead and come forward. And as always, we take ecomments. Ms. City Clerk, do we have any ecomments on this study session?
We have one ecomment submitted pertaining to the Bastin Cherry Tree Farm, so this doesn't look like a study session comment.
Right, okay. And is that the only ecomment on the regular meeting?
Oh, no.
For the public comments?
We have several on the regular meeting. Let me check.
But I mean for public comments.
This item.
Okay. But for this item.
Yes, yeah, that was it for study session.
Okay, is there, are there any members of the public present who would like to speak on this study session item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. And this study session is for a city financial update. Mr. City Manager, will you please kick it off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item was requested at the August 18th meeting, just to bring it back. Have an update on the city's financials. I do apologize, we've been working on this item up until about 3 o'clock today, so that's why it's a supplemental item. There are some copies up here for the members of the public. But going forward, so at the August 18th, the city council meeting is requested.
And then let's just go ahead and clarify for people, this, now that this is being talked about during study session, this will be on our website.
Correct.
And, and it's, and if you want to follow it now, obviously you can follow it through live streaming and on our cable.
So as normal with-
Are we broadcasting this?
Correct, we are broadcasting this. It is being livestreamed from our cityoffullerton.com backslash FTV3. Don't know if Facebook is going out, but, okay, not Facebook tonight.
I want to make sure it's being broadcast.
So, but the PowerPoint and the memo will be available on our budget site also as we go forward. And, yes, so, and the basis of a study session versus a regular item is it's being presented more as an informational item to hear some questions, have some general discussion, but no action can be taken and no action can be directed to staff. If need be, we could always bring something back in the future, but this is really an update as to where we are. And basically, specifically, some questions about the sales tax measure on the November ballot, and really what happens if it does not pass, and if it does, what is the process that the city would follow in that case? And we'll get into that during the presentation. So, so again, this is to look at the current financial conditions of the city. We are impacted in the short term because of the COVID-19 financial crisis, but the city has exhibited a very long-term financial instability in our ability to operate, as I describe, a roller coaster when you look at it. We will be looking at projection of the process if the sales tax measure is passed and if it is not. So, the city is currently challenged. We are continually expected to provide a level of public services and critical infrastructure projects, but we are increasingly failing to do so due to the long-term financial crisis, long-term financial issues that the city faces. It is exacerbated by the current COVID-19 crisis, which, you know, we have projected about a $7.9 million deficit during this current fiscal year that we have plugged with a lot of vacancies. And again, with vacancies, what that means is we are reducing services to the public because all services are provided by people, by staff. So, City of Fullerton exists off two primary revenue sources, property taxes and sales taxes. We do get additional revenues from transit occupancy taxes, TOT or the hotel bed tax, franchise fees and charges for services. A lot of those charges for services come from the Development Services, Community Development, Economic Development Department, so.
Mr. Manager, I just want to point out that I just went on the city website. It is not, this is not being broadcast.
Okay.
Not livestreamed.
Yeah.
It is the T-
She's working on it right now.
She is, okay. Just wanted to point that out.
We'll make sure it is broadcast, but it will always, even if it's not being livestreamed, it is being recorded, and then it will be replayed on Channel 3 and then available via our YouTube channel, so. TOT is usually other taxes, the 5%, so. So, I actually had, even though I got this finished about 3 o'clock today, I actually had fun doing some history on it because I was, in my office right now, I have budget books that date back to 1977, '78. And then I was looking at our historical records that are online that anybody, anybody can access, looking at minutes of council meetings. More recently, we started keeping the agenda reports, which usually have a lot more information. We did not do that back in the 1980s. But you could tell over all those times, even back in the 1980s, that the city was struggling with decisions and revenues and trying to deliver the services that were demanded of it. We also had a lot of growth during that time. And then, of course, in the 1970s, at the end, we had Proposition 13, which rearranged how revenues came into local government. So, as I said, we've existed off those primary two revenue sources. Other cities do have additional revenue opportunities that we don't utilize. The utility users tax, increased use of community facility districts, even though we do have two here in town, Amrich Heights and the East Coyote Hills area. And then we also just don't have a strong commercial retail base to generate that higher sales tax. So we don't have the regional malls, we don't have large vehicle dealerships in an auto mall type setup. And as I described in previous times, we have a lower percentage of commercial land use, which compounded over time adds up to less sales tax over time. So, and I wish we had Anaheim's problem of hotels where they generate over $185 million in TOT, whereas we generate about 3.1 in normal years, and we're projecting for this current fiscal year to be down about 2.4. And I think we're probably going to have to adjust that down a little bit as we go forward, just because of the current COVID-19 impact still. So, so going over the property tax overview, I've shown this before, but wanted to kind of reiterate it, that the city only gets about 15.64% of the property taxes paid. You could have two homes built next to each other, and you would expect that they would generate the same amount of property tax. They don't because of Prop 13 and when that house was assessed. And this is a true story. You have one house that its assessment is $63,000. So, that generates about 638 overall in property taxes, 99 of which comes to the city. The house next door is assessed at $619,000. And so that 15.64 means that $968 comes to the city. And so, that's one of the problems, is that sometimes those, it's a benefit for homeowners, but there is some discrepancy in the amount of property tax. So when somebody comes in here and says, "Well, I pay my property taxes", yes, they do, and we thank you. The majority of it goes to schools, over 70%, but it also depends on how long you have owned your house. The next one is the sales tax overview, real quickly. Again, the current sales tax rate is 7.75. We get the 1% of that, so that's about 13% of the overall. So, if you spend a dollar and it's taxable, and you spend 7.75 cents, 13% of it comes back to the city. The majority goes up to the state, a lot of it goes to the county, but again, we get about 13% of the sales tax that is generated. And again, it's important to note that that's the sales tax generated if you go into a store here in Fullerton. If you click and point online and have it delivered, unfortunately, that is, that is, sales tax that is generated to the county pool. And instead of getting the 1%, we actually get only .03% of that amount. So there's some, a lot of discrepancy there. We have been actively working with our towns and public affairs advocates to see if there's some changes. I'm actually putting together an email to some of the winner cities, because there are cities who get a larger portion of sales tax than what they do based on their commercial activity already. And if there's any change to the sales tax distribution method, they would lose that amount. So, that's one reason why no one's done anything up in Sacramento, is there's winners and losers. So there's got to be a middle ground where we can equalize it, make it fair, but do it in a way that doesn't penalize the losers so bad.
Could I have a clarification on the sales tax? We currently have 7.75% sales tax, and in the graph it shows 13%. But you keep saying that the city only gets 1%. Does that mean that the balance is divided between the county and the state? So 6.75% of the 7.75% does not go to the city?
Correct.
So that 13% that goes to the city is the 1% of the sales tax?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then the chart on the bottom, that's provided by our consultants, HDL, kind of shows where, you know, so you have, the State General Fund gets about 3.9%, a little bit more, the County General Fund, County Parks, and so on. And then the sales tax per capita comparison, where we are at about $144 per capita. Berea is up at that 488. City of Orange is at 301, Placentia 223, and Garden Grove is 235. So again, we generate less sales tax per capita based on some of the issues here.
Can I ask, why is it that Placentia, that is a smaller city than ours, with less commercial than us, have higher tax, sales tax revenue?
One thing, that figure may be their 1% tax that they approved two years ago, since it is based on the 1920 fiscal year. So they did pass a 1% add-on sales tax. They do also have a smaller population, probably about 40, 52,000 or so, so. So looking back at 30 years of actual general fund revenues and expenditures, you see kind of an up and down, but a general increase, both in revenues and expenditures, which is a good thing. The revenues, which is represented by the yellow or gold line, you can see sometimes is under the expenditure, sometimes over. The reality is, when you look at 30 years, only 10 times did we have a general fund surplus, and 20 times we had a general fund deficit. And so, that's kind of a critical thing, again, going back to the roller coaster way of how this city has kind of budgeted, given, taken, cut employees, in that we just haven't been a sustainable environment in which to have steady growth, you know, reasonable surpluses that can be, you know, invested back into the community, in this case, into our roads. And then this one is also a look at a 30-year history of budgeted full-time equivalent positions. And a full-time equivalent position includes non-regular staffing. So part-time staff, what you do is you figure if a full-time person works 2,080 hours a year, you add up all the hours, and then you divide by the 2,080, and that gets you, so, you can see that we had a high of well over 800 way back in 1991, greatly dipped, came back up, dipped again after the Great Recession, and then we've been on a downward curve. The trend line there is that straight line, and you can tell that is continually going down. So the trend is that we are shedding staffing, and we know that just from every budget year and the amount of vacancies that we've been holding open. Now, the true staffing is actually less than that, because that's the budgeted full-time equivalents. So, what we truly have right now would put that last year number even further down.
Ken, do we know historically why there was a dip in the 90s with employees?
Again, there was the dot-com boom, or boom and bust at that point. And you also, at that time, with the dot-com bust, the state initiated several, the triple flip and some other things, where they raided local government funding. So they took our property taxes, they actually took some sales tax at one time. From that, the League of Cities and the Cities joined together, the Association of Counties, to do Proposition 1A, and then I think Proposition 22 to prevent the state from raiding our funds. Two years later, that's when Governor Brown basically took away redevelopment agencies. So I think he had the final say on that little battle between local government and the state. But it was really from that. The state took a lot of funds during that time, and the city saw significant decreases in our ability to support. But it also, kind of like what we experienced this year with COVID-19, because we don't have adequate reserves, the contingency reserves, we don't have that ability to fall back on a rainy day fund to get through some of these valleys. And so we're very reactive in the city that when we don't have the funding coming in, we automatically turn to reduced services and reduced staff.
One of the reasons for the dip in the mid-'90s also had to do with the recall. And there are a lot of employees left the city at that time because they felt like the government was just a little unstable. And that certainly happened with the recall in 2012 as well.
Yeah. So again, I think in 1993, based on an earlier infrastructure report, and that actually is in the narrative to this, the city council at the time decided to put out a 3%, they voted on an ordinance, would be a 3% utility users tax. And that's what was referendum. And also, what happened was three of the members were recalled. So, they attempted to try to find a new revenue source, they put something in, it was quickly taken away. So the next is just kind of, we're now overlapping all of those charts to kind of show the full-time positions compared to like when we had surpluses and deficits. And again, that trend line of going down, but some correlation of, we don't have money, we cut staff. And then on the flip side, the population trend. So, 1980, big boom, up to 1990 census, again, in the 2000 census, and a steady increase since then, a little bit of a leveling out. But again, it kind of goes back to the fact that we are not a stagnant community. We do continue to grow. The state has tremendous growth plans for us, based on the Arena numbers. So, a lot of questions about next steps. And regardless of what happens in November, there are several things that we have to do. So, first of all, we have to get through the COVID-19 financial impacts. And what I say up there is, you know, these are short-term hurdles in the financial marathon that the city faces. We were coming down this path anyway because of our long-term issues. COVID-19 smacked us in the face, and we had to react accordingly. And we have, you know, the 3.1 million that initially we determined we needed to cut from last fiscal year to use, and use contingency reserves. We've reduced that amount since. But again, the steps that this council has taken to create a budget balance for the current fiscal year, which included the executive staff pay cuts, two of the units taking 5% pay cuts, deferral of pay increases from the POA, the elimination or the separation of the 153 part-time employees, and the unfortunate seven separations from the one association. But those are all steps that get through the current year. And then through this whole time, we are focusing on the long-term issues and where we go from there.
And there was the defunding of vacant positions, correct, as well?
There was a tremendous amount. There was probably about, almost $3 million of vacant positions. And really, the police department took the hardest hit. You know, they are budgeted at 140 sworn officers. They've agreed not to exceed 125 sworn officers for this fiscal year, and they're even below that amount.
Chief, how many officers do we have right now, active on the streets?
I would estimate that somewhere around 105 that are deployable.
Okay, thank you.
So, for any way to get out of this, and what most cities, and the cities I've been involved with, a strategic planning process has always helped. Strategic planning, in a nutshell, is basically, you look at your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. You look at your resources, you prioritize what's out there, you get community input, the council has a good discussion with facts and information. And through that process, they can help dictate the budget choices that are made, and then the appropriations that are made for that next fiscal year. You can plan for projects going forward, you can look long-range at what, you know, a decision may, how it may impact you long-range down the road. And we're developing some of that software to do that. We'll show you at the very end of this, how we're looking at that. But you want to have a financial process through that, that looks at the five, the 10, and the 20-year financial forecasting. A five-year forecast is easier to do and a little bit more true as you get out more, 10 years and certainly the 20-year. It's a tool just to kind of see how some things impact your budget, but you have to realize, things change. We, none of us expected the COVID issue. And two years from now, we could have a boon, we could have a bust, we could have another recession. We have planned for mild recessions. But really, you know, the five-year financial forecast is very important, and then looking at the 10 and 20, just to give you an idea of where you're going in a general direction. So, and my recommendation, and what we started about two and a half, almost three years ago, is that we should conduct a strategic planning session in the first quarter. That's after the comprehensive annual financial reports are done, the CAFR. So that gives you audited financials for the prior fiscal year. And it's prior to any budget study session. So, the next steps that I would suggest is no matter what happens in November, that we begin the process of doing a strategic planning session. We're already drafting an RFP to look for somebody. Again, three years ago, we started off the process where it was just to identify some strategic priority statements. Then about a year and a half, two years ago, we brought Alan Roder back again, who was interim city manager, to help us develop some mission, vision, values, look at some other items. And then we had planned on having a strategic planning session this year, but then COVID came around and kind of interrupted those plans. So, but regardless, due to our financial situation, we are going to need to sit down, work with the community, set priorities, and look at the resources that we have. And the two scenarios that we face are vastly different, whether there is a sales tax measure or not. So, right now, we are drafting an RFQ/RFP for strategic planning to bring somebody in from the outside. It's, I do believe it's important that it's facilitated by an outside third party. Around February or so, we had looked to begin community survey and input processes. Late March, April, we would hold a strategic planning meeting. Usually, those are longer, four hours, sometimes even longer, maybe they could be two days, depends. We'll have a lot to talk about at that point. Again, we'll have the audited 1920 financials. We will also have a better understanding of the fiscal year 2021 picture that we're in right now. We, you know, all indications are that the federal government is not going to do anything more with regard to any type of stimulus until after the election. And then even after that point, who knows what's going to happen. But then you use all of that information as the basis for your next fiscal year budget. So, if there is an approved sales tax, that scenario, we would go ahead with a strategic planning process. We'd move forward with additional planning for street infrastructure improvements. Basically, what we want to do is, and we've started, I've talked to Meg McWade, our Director of Public Works, about this, getting things shelf-ready. So, making sure that, you know, when the money starts coming in, if the people have voted for it, they want streets improved. So we want to make sure that we have street-ready projects, and so we're starting to prepare that no matter what at this time. We would also look at actuarial reviews of our pension, health, liability funds, conduct a compensation and classification review, but really start to put together planning documents so that when we go through that strategic planning review, we have the information that will help you, the council, make decisions. We also need to agree on a path towards a 17% contingency reserve level. Right now, we're between 8 and 10%. We were looking at 6% contingency level because of our use of about $3 million for last fiscal year, but we've reduced that amount. 10% is very low. The Government Finance Officers Association recommendation is a 17%, which is a two-month kind of contingency. So we would look to get direction, do we, with new sales tax revenue coming in, do we go right up to 17%? Or do we take three years, four years, five years to get to that level? So those are decisions that we would bring to you post-November and during that strategic planning session.
Ken, historically, why did the city never have a proper contingent, a reserve level?
Because we never had the money.
But was there no conscious decision to have a certain percentage? I mean, you could-
Well, it's always been 10, it's always been 10%. And I think the city rested on the fact that 10% was worked. I think it's very low, and you have a lot of cities that, you know, have a much higher, much higher than 17%. Lot of cities that are contract cities actually have almost 100% of their operating expenditures as a reserve.
For many years, there was no contingency fund or reserves at all. And when Jim Armstrong was the city manager through the '90s, he was the one that initiated the 10%. But before that, you know, if there was extra money, it would just go into the general fund.
And a lot of that may date back to how, again, how budgeting was done in the 1970s, when we had sales tax. But at the time, the city was able to, pre-Prop 13, set the millage rate, which was, they could set the property tax rate. And even, we set it for the park fund, we set it for the library fund, we set it for several bond debt issuances. Even back in 1954 and '56, we had retirement planning. There was a property tax rate for that. So, at that point, you may not have needed a contingency fund or anything to the point of 10%, because each year, you could go back, set a property tax rate, get what you need. So there was some basis. And then, yeah, the '80s struggled, and then Jim Armstrong was a very good city manager, came in, brought a lot of good financial practices.
Yeah, there was a much more relaxed approach towards budgeting in the early years. I started in '94 here. And clearly, the external pressures of pensions, the Prop 13 reduced some of the ability of the city to generate revenues internally. And also, with Prop 2, 18, and other, other controls, it became more complicated to look at revenue sources, and those pressures became real. And Jim did an excellent job of bringing us into the 20th, 20th century in terms of budgeting at that time. He did a real good job.
Well, and the death of redevelopment can't be discounted either, because many of our infrastructure projects were associated with redevelopment projects, and the city benefited from the redevelopment that increased property values. And 100% of the ups in property taxes went to the city to pour into other redevelopment projects. And when the state killed that plan, it was pretty devastating to the city of Fullerton.
Also, one of the things, you know, the city council passed the infrastructure fund. That was ordinance number 3284 is approved initially, first read on July 7th, adopted on July 21st. What that does is basically takes 50% of revenue over a defined baseline for both sales tax and secured property tax, puts it into an infrastructure fund. So, if the sales tax measure is passed in November, that's going to be a significant- that's going to be a significant boon to the infrastructure fund. Essentially, at that point, half of whatever is raised by that sales tax would go into the infrastructure fund for the benefit of our streets and infrastructure projects. So, and the way it's set up, the council always has the ability to add more money into it. In fact, as we look at some of the models at the end of this presentation, for the first several years, we put more money into the infrastructure fund just to kind of, you know, seed that, just knowing that we have such a deficiency on roads that that's what the people want. So that's, but that's just a model to show that. So, and then as we go forward, again, we would have a series of public budget study sessions, looking back at the minutes from 1980s. They had two days of department-provided budget sessions where the department heads would talk about their budgets. They had something called the expenditure decision package, which would be, you know, this is what they want, this is what they're proposing. The council would debate whether that goes forward. And so it was a lot of stuff done at the dais based on the times that were there. They didn't have money, so they were very frugal with some of those decision packages coming up. So we would look to have probably enhanced budget study sessions the first several years to make sure that people understand where those funds are going and how we're going to be operating the city. And a close, of course, the use of the long-term financing forecasting tools, so.
Ken, can you explain if there, what kind of oversight is associated with Measure S?
So if Measure S is passed, prior to, before April 1st of 2021, we will bring back to the city council the, an ordinance and the basis for creating a, lack of better terms, a Measure S Oversight Committee. So that would be a five-to-nine-member committee that would overview and oversight the utilization of Measure S revenues. So they would hold the city accountable for how they're spent. They would receive the reports. A report also would go to the INREC committee on any infrastructure improvements. But that's the Oversight Committee that would be formed, and it would be a separate standing Brown acted commission committee. So more so the no sales tax scenario, and what would we do there? So again, we would most certainly still have to go forward with a strategic planning process. One of the things I'd recommend is we would issue an RFP for a fiscal sustainability review to bring in a third-party review of all the city finances, our budget, our staffing models. Because ultimately, if it fails, one of the issues that we've identified in earlier polling is there's just not trust of government, of the council. And so going forward and looking at what would have to be cut or how we would have to prioritize expenditures, I do seriously believe that a third-party would have to come in and really scrub and audit so that a third-party says, no, they've been truthful in, you know, where their liability funds are, what the revenue's coming in, their projections, and yeah, here's what you have, and oh, by the way, this is what we recommend for fiscal sustainability measures.
Why haven't we done this already?
The fiscal sustainability review? We could do it at any time, it costs money, it's probably a good $75,000. But I believe, at least in the three years I've been here, we've been very forthright with the budget information. We have conducted, we've used outside consultants, first of all, to scrub all of the departments. We've done a review of the Public Works Department, Community Economic Development. We're finishing up on right now the Parks and Rec. Have a finished one for the Admin Services to include HR, basically to make sure that we're running effectively and smoothly and in the best practices of how a department should do. To my knowledge, we had not done organizational assessments of the departments, and so we've found some outdated practices. In fact, today, I want to, I was going to talk about it at the regular council meeting, but we had a presentation by our admin analyst group, who are getting together now on a regular basis. They're looking at city processes. So they reviewed our hiring process. They did a whole chart of different things, and they've made some wonderful presentations which should help us in the future improve the efficiency of our hiring process. And so we could always do it, but if there is no sales tax, I most definitely would recommend it. And we would, again, with no money, we'd have to find the amount of money to pay for it, but at that point, it's a very worthy investment. So again, we, during the strategic planning process, we would prioritize. The city council would have a very, very tough job at that point. You would be looking at city services. As we have discussed before, you know, this year, for the fiscal year, we had to reduce by about 7.98 million, let's call it, to be balanced. We believe going forward that each year, just to meet, we would have to cut about $5 million out of our expenditure budget. Some of that will continue to be done through vacancies. The majority of it will be. But there's going to be a point in time where our expenditures continue to outpace our revenues, and we're going to be looking at those services. You know, a lot of criticism this year for my decision to kind of stop operations at the museum and try to do a reboot. If the sales tax does not pass, I don't think that reboot for a city-supported museum is going to come back. We have the library, and, you know, would there be cuts there? Parks and Rec, what type of programs there? Ultimately, some of those departments that have not received cuts, Community Economic Development, they generate a lot of their revenue because they're a fee basis, a charge basis. But more than likely, we would have to make some cuts there, and Fire Department. So they do generate some revenue from ambulance, or from transport and paramedic fees and all that stuff, but they are a significant source of expenditures for the general fund. And unlike the police department, which is also a significant source, we have a minimum staffing complement in the Fire Department. So we have six stations, basically four people, we have 24 on at all time. At least in the police department, we've gone from 140. You've heard, we have 105 available for on the street, but we're not hiring over 125. We don't have that flexibility in the Fire Department. So all departments would have to be looked at, and the council for next year is going to have to prioritize those services and the programs if we do not get the revenue to continue it. And then the worst part is it's not just being balanced. We also want to make sure that we are putting money into the infrastructure. Because if we put no money in, other than the $4.5 to $5 million that we do on an annual basis to our roads, we know that our roads are going to continue to degrade, and we're going to be further behind. So as was directed several, several months ago, even last year, you know, can we look at what does it mean to reallocate $6 million into the roads? And even at that point, as determined by the INREC committee, $6 million kind of keeps us hanging there on a basis. We're not going up, but we're not dropping as fast as we would otherwise. So we would have to look at reallocating, reprioritizing $6 million from current services, programs, personnel in order to put that into the roads. And I think that's going to be, because by that point, we're already used all of our vacant positions. It's going to be true personnel programs in good portions of departments.
And, and I think, wasn't it the INREC, they identified that our issue is, is a lack of revenue? And they also identified other things, not just our, our roads. For example, one issue that I know specifically, because I always, it's in my neighborhood, it's the light grid.
Oh, absolutely.
And that alone, I think, is estimated $35 million just to upgrade the light grid so that it doesn't keep going out every now and then. So we do have other issues other than the road in our infrastructure.
Oh, absolutely. And even, we have started a accessibility review of all city departments, streets, parks, and parking lots. And we have a lot of money to bring our parking lots up for accessibility issues. And oh, by the way, we're liable, and we are sued, as you know, for having accessibility issues at different places. So, yeah, infrastructure includes the streets, sidewalks, physical buildings, and a lot more. The streetlights, very expensive due to the older high-series circuit lighting, so.
There's always been a criticism of, of our public safety budget as it taking, you know, taking a big portion of our general fund. Now, I, I looked into it, I know that that's not how you cut with, based on percentages. But I'd like to elaborate, for you to elaborate a little bit more on that because I think that, that is something that has been a point of contention by, by many.
Yeah, and people here in the council certainly know that we focus on the general fund quite a bit. The general fund budgeted expenditures for this current fiscal year were planned at $108 million. Now we've cut, so it's about $100 million. Because that's the discretionary funding ability. But the total fund for the city is actually $240 million. That includes, you know, the sewer fund, the sanitation fund, the water utilities, CIP projects that we're putting forward. So, yeah, when you look at, okay, police expenditures per city funding, it's, you can't just look at the general fund, you have to look at the total fund, and it is a lot less when you look at it at the total fund. So, yeah, you know, you could use percentages and numbers in any way, but.
And, and are there any, in the, in the cuts that you've mentioned, is that, is that going to be enough? Because I've always felt that the city's issue has not been in cutting. Because I, I witnessed the city even before I got on, just cuts, 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 cuts. And there was always been a majority on council that has had the sentiment and the philosophy of just cutting. But I, I, as a resident, before I got on council, I mean, we are all seeing the effects of this, this cuts. When we're saying, let's cut employees, we're cutting services, which means, you know, our roads are going to continue to debilitate. You know, when we call 911, I'm not going to get the response, especially, you know, this is a big sentiment in South Fullerton. What, when we're talking cuts in the future, what effects is this going to be on the services? I mean, we're already on a compromised services, whether, you know, cutting our grass in the parks or cleaning them up and, you know, things like that. People are seeing, physically seeing now visibly the, you know, the, the roads being dirty. And, I mean, so many times when people are calling, saying, hey, can we go and clean up ourselves? I mean, I don't think this is a good quality of life.
There, there's going to be multiple impacts from that, especially if, you know, we are redirecting up to $6 million or more to infrastructure, to the roads. The cuts would be significant because, again, at that point, we're probably hitting the services that folks need. So, and I'm not, you know, I know there's been some, well, what exact cuts are you going to recommend, Ken? Well, I'm not going to say that because I don't know where we're going to be come November, January, wherever. But it, you know, using fire as an example, if we have six stations, I don't think it's an option to shut down a station, but it may be an option to remove a firefighter from each of the engines. And we used to have three firefighters on an engine. We made some cuts, but what we did by cutting is we put a fourth firefighter, paramedic on an engine, which actually increased the service level. Because now that engine, once they responded to an emergency medical situation and a paramedic was riding along with the ambulance, that fire truck with three people on it is still in service. With two, it's not. But more than likely, we would have to go down to three firefighters on an engine for all of our fleet. So that is a cut because you are actually taking that engine out if they're doing a medical call and transporting to...
Yeah, we have talked to many, many residents, and public safety has been always their number-one concern, everybody's concern here, and, and I, I'm not seeing where we can cut anymore. But, you know, we can continue.
So there's the, so we talked about the need to cut, but there's also options for additional revenues. And these were addressed two years ago, and they are also addressed through the INREC report. If the sales tax is not approved, then, and if there's still a demand and a need for streets, alleys, public right-of-way improvements, we could look at individual assessment districts. And so what that means basically is an assessment district would issue a bond to generate the funding to make the improvements, and then those who have a direct benefit to it, so those who live along it or have some nexus to that street improvement, it would be placed on their property tax, and they would be paying back. So anybody who lives in the two current community facility districts, so Amherst Heights or East Coyote Hills, is already paying into a community facility district, and they're paying for the roads and infrastructure that was put in when those developments were built. So, but you can create an assessment district over a currently-built residential area. You just have to go through and define the nexus because somebody who lives two miles away should not be paying for residential streets in a neighborhood if they don't travel through there. So that would be, you know, one option is to look at how we divide up and, you know, implement some assessment districts. The other thing is individual landscape maintenance assessment districts. So we get a lot of criticism for not trimming medians, parkways, other things like that. Again, you could do that, but you have to have a nexus and a connection to it. But again, that goes back to a property-based assessment. A lighting assessment district, you talked about the millions of dollars, $35 million at a minimum, to redo our high-series circuit street lighting, which is in some of our older neighborhoods. And again, that would be a property-based assessment to generate money that is paid off on a bond, basically over 30 years, to replace that lighting, and then also to operate it. So you can have lighting and maintenance districts that actually pays for the operations as well. Some other cities have that. And then you could also look at community services districts or community facility districts to put on place. When I was in another city, we put both in for a development, an all-future development, so that the one development paid into the police and fire structure that was already in place. And then on an annual basis, there was, I think, a $110 charge to the property owners going forward to pay for police and fire protection. So those are all some tools that are allowed by the California code. It's very difficult, but again, I think the biggest issue is they're all property-based assessments. When, even when INREC was looking at, do we look at a parcel tax or a sales tax? The sales tax was, I think in people's opinion, more fair, spread out. You know, businesses, visitors, workers, residents, all pay it. But all of these assessment districts are purely property. So you, you know, layer those upon, and you start having additional property taxes, much like down in South County where they have your basic levy and then a lot more on top.
And these are, do these, because these are property taxes, do these have to go through any, any ballot measures or?
It's not a, I'm not an expert on this, but it's, most of them are like Prop 218 in which it is a mail ballot, protest ballot, one of those mechanisms where it's not at a general election. But anybody who would be assessed would have an opportunity to get the information, get the ballot, send it in. At the county meeting, when the ordinance is passed, the ballots would be opened. If it's more than 50% plus one protest, it does not go forward. So things like that.
And these property taxes are based on the value of the property? Are they, what sort of percentages are we looking at?
More than, that I couldn't tell you because what would happen is you have to have an engineering assessment beforehand. So they would go out, they would define the area that has a nexus, they would look at the need, the proposed improvements, what the bond rate is and all that stuff, and do that. Because a sense, what you're doing is you're, we would be passing multiple bonds, and then the assessments would be paying off those bonds. So those property owners would be paying off those bonds.
Like we're getting a loan, now we've got to pay it back.
Any bond, basically, you're paying, you know, the bond price plus 90%.
Yeah, and, and you mentioned the, the assessment districts, the alleys up in Amherst Park, that they, they're paying for those roads that they, that were built. When those roads go bad, who pays for those now?
So more than likely, those were all built by the developer, turned over to the city, so we have maintenance responsibility, except if they are still a private street. And so some, up there, you have some private developments that have private streets. They pay for it. In fact, we're working with one HOA who actually wants to pay for the public street out of their dues because they're having their streets paved and the main collector street out... out of their dues because they're having their streets paved and the main collector's street outside is a mess and they're working with us to pay for that. But yeah, the city has a responsibility once they're turned over to the city by the developer. So. So again, kind of going forward, just a little bit more reiteration, you know, ultimately, the city council is going to decide how to keep the expenditures in line with, going with the ongoing revenues. And then we kind of talked about, you know, the, the additional six million or more to be reprioritized, reallocated. And again, not picking on any department or calling out anybody, but, you know, everybody would be open to this. And that's where the hard work of the council to make those decisions will be at, at that point. So the bad news is that with no new sales tax and no other ongoing revenue source, we're going to exhaust our contingency reserves by fiscal year 2024, 25. And that takes into consideration that we're still doing the, the five million a year vacancy factors and all that stuff. So we're holding those things open and looking at other budget reduction measures. You know, until we kind of sit down and prioritize and make decisions, I, I can't tell you what service levels will be like, other than they will be lower. And then important to me and to, I think, city staff and to the residents, the impact of recruitment and retention, we hear about this over and over, mostly in police and fire. But really, if we're going to see much greater turnover in city work regardless. So, and we know what that means is that you're, on the, on the positive side, you're bringing in PEPRA people who are, they're the Public Employees Relation Retirement Reform Act, Public Employee Retirement, yeah. And so they're a little bit different of a pension level. We're doing very well on that just already with the turnover that we have. We're above other cities in their percentages, especially in our safety areas. But we know about the training, the recruitment, customer service. So we will see an impact in the turnover rate. So what I want to do now is turn it over real quick to Ellis, just to go through some key assumptions. And then we just have two charts that kind of show what we're going to be using when we come back to look at decision-making. So it's the, the start of that forecasting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So I think before we go into the two different financial models that was developed by staff, I kind of wanted to go through some basic key assumptions. So for our revenue growth assumptions for both models, we decided to use a static 2% growth for the majority of the revenue categories. We did factor in a recessionary period every five years where we zeroed out or reduced some of the revenue growth factors. And then we did build in salary increases for all the different bargaining groups, starting in fiscal year, thank you, 21, 22. And then in addition to that, what we had done was we built in CalPERS losses about every five years because that does add to the UAL base, which is then amortized over a 20-year period. In addition to that, we did build in the potential estimated transfers to the infrastructure fund based on the ordinance that was passed by city council. So we did decide to use a static modeling assumptions mainly because the, when we did do the infrastructure fund, we brought back several different models, which also layered on fluctuations that were kind of based on historic fluctuations from the prior 10 years. But due to the impacts of COVID and the unknowns relating to the duration and the fact that this model does go out beyond five years, we decided to just go with it, like the static increases in the modeling itself. So as we look at this first model, this is with no add-on sales tax incorporated. So what we did use is revised projections for fiscal year 1920, the adopted budget for 2021. And then from 21, 22 all the way to fiscal year 30, 31, that's where we have the static increases or periodic decreases based on recession as well as CalPERS losses. So the revenue base and transfers in is kind of like our base revenues based on our revised projections as well as the adopted budget and then the growth factors built in thereafter. As shared with city council via memo drafted by myself and the city manager, based on fiscal year 1920, the additional changes to our sales tax estimates, we will be revamping our revenue estimates for, to close fiscal year 1920 and that should be brought back to council sometime in January, February, once we have closed December numbers for formal adoption by city council. That leaves total revenues and transfers in at about $97 million. And our expenditure base was what is pretty much holding static as we had previously projected. Adopted budget, transfer out of $100,000. And then right now, because the infrastructure fund would not go into place until probably 2021, 22, there's no infrastructure fund transfer. With that, the change in fund balance for fiscal year 1920 is a negative 809,000, which city council did authorize us to use some contingency reserves to close out fiscal year 1920, thereby reducing our ending fund balance to 9.3, 9.4 million dollars. If we decide to allocate or if city council decides to allocate the entire ending fund balance to contingency reserves, that 9.4 million dollars will be set aside for contingency, thereby leaving no unassigned fund balance available for additional discretionary spending or allocation by city council in the future years. So this is how the model for the no add-on sales tax is kind of predicated. As the city manager had mentioned, for the budget balancing measures, which is the second line under the expenditure section for fiscal year 2021, when we had adopted the budget, it was directed that we essentially closed that budget deficit of 7.9 million dollars. To date, we're probably about a million dollars shy of doing that, but with additional CARES Act funding, additional vacancies due to delayed recruitments, we think that we will be able to close that gap by the end of the fiscal year.
Ellis, if I may, your, your revenue base and projections there, sales tax, are you projecting the, the amount that we had in 1819? Or is that, let's say it was 20 million, are you carrying that over to the other years?
So for the 1920, because of the revised revenue estimates, that $2 million adjusts our sales tax numbers up by about 1.2, 1.3? Yeah, 1.2 million dollars. When we did adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget, we did ramp down sales tax estimates. But we did factor in a very quick V-shaped recovery when we had built out the 2021 budget. So depending on the protraction of the economic impacts of COVID, those numbers may or may not fluctuate and it's too early to tell at this time.
Right, because I'm saying if we have, if it takes time for us to recover, our revenue projections may be lower than we have here or we recover rather quickly than.
That, that is correct. So I think when we did build out the adopted budget for 2021, we held property taxes somewhat stable and we did increase them, I think about 2%. The sales tax and the transient occupancy tax was ramped down slightly because we did anticipate a quicker recovery sometime in this fourth quarter of this calendar year. So I think that our sales tax numbers for the adopted 2021 budget are probably going to be a little bit more in line with what we've seen in terms of the additional information we've gotten from our sales tax consultants due to, due to the increases in sales tax relating to the online sales.
And then the reason I was asking, because when, when we, my wife and I, we walked through downtown on the weekend mornings and in one block, we literally counted 12 stores, shops, whatever, out. And so I, I don't see though, well, maybe I'm wrong, I don't see those opening up soon as then this quarter ends and next quarter and saying, we're here. And that's just in that one block of Harbor of Downtown between Chapman and Wilshire. I mean, we, we, I'm sorry, between Chapman and Commonwealth, we, we counted and it's, I don't see how those retail places can be up and running and general, well, maybe they can, but.
Yeah, I think what did prop up our adjustments to revenue for fiscal year 1920 was the significant amount of federal stimulus that had kind of prompted additional consumer spending, the payroll protection program that went, put in to enable workers to continue to get paid. But a lot of those federal programs are kind of sunsetting and as the city manager did mention earlier, probably not until after the election, we'll see whether or not those programs will be extended and/or increased. So that is also a very, very large unknown variable at this time. So fiscal year 2021 was built based on information that was available at the time we did adopt the budget. When we have a little bit more information, because we're only into the third month of this fiscal year, probably in February, March timeframe, once the CAFER has been issued and we have numbers through December and we have hopefully a little bit more clarity as to the duration of the current pandemic, we will be bringing back potential revenue as well as expenditure adjustments for city council consideration at that time. So as I mentioned earlier, for the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget, we did have a operating deficit of about 7.9 million. We are fairly close to closing that gap. And then when we do come back in probably February, March timeframe with the mid-year update, we will be formalizing budget adjustments for city council approval at that time. So that would leave us with about 9.67 or 9.6 million for, to end fiscal year 2021, ending fund balance and should city council deem to allocate that entire balance to contingency reserve again, there would be no unassigned fund balance available for discretionary allocation by city council. The model thereafter projects that we will need to enhance, at least at a minimum institute probably about $5 million in additional budget balancing measures for fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2024, 25. Even with that, you can see that our contingency reserve would continue to be depleted and it would be completely depleted as we close out fiscal year 24, 25. And we would be ending fiscal year 24, 25 with a negative ending fund balance. And at that point, if no additional cost reductions or permanently sustained budget reductions are implemented, the city will potentially be looking at possible liquidity issues, which is something that city council at that time would need to kind of consider taking actions to avoid. So with that, I'm going to go over to the next models.
Sorry, Ellis, when you're saying liquidity issues and council's taking action, are you talking about bankruptcy?
I, I wouldn't say bankruptcy, but I think at that point, I think as we go into 21, 22, if there's no sales tax measure passed, as the city manager had mentioned earlier, there's going to be a lot of difficult decisions that are being, going to be put forth in front of city council to make determinations. As you can see from the model and from the history of the fluctuations and the surpluses and deficits that the city has kind of weathered, there is, without additional more sustained budget cuts and programmatic cuts, it's going to be very difficult for the city to continue to operate the way it has done historically.
And there's a process for even getting to that point. The city would have to declare a fiscal emergency. There's a process for that. There's a process to the state that makes the city have to jump through a lot of hoops because at that point, with a fiscal emergency and going towards insolvency, you're talking about abridging contracts and doing other things. And so it's an extensive process that would have to go. And of course, our point is to avoid that at all costs. So.
With that, I'll move over to the next model, which models are projections based on if the sales tax measure is successful in November. So it's essentially the same revenue base and transfers in. What you see here in the revenue section is the balance added for the add-on sales tax estimates. We did do a slightly slower ramp up for fiscal year 21, 22. Originally, I think they were anticipating about 25 million, but with COVID and things of that nature, we felt it more prudent to start off the model with about a $5 million increase due to the add-on sales tax, ramping it up to 22.4 million and then 25 million and then ongoing thereafter increases. The same expenditure base budget balancing measures were also incorporated in this. The third line under the expenditures takes into consideration any excess fund balance that may be available for city council discretionary allocation. And we did build that in as an expenditure in the subsequent fiscal year. We also incorporated the increases to the infrastructure fund due to the increased baseline, the property tax and secured property tax and sales tax that would be increased, that would be funneled to the infrastructure fund. In addition, because of the sales tax measure and that one of the major strategic priorities identified by city council was infrastructure, we had built into the model additional discretionary allocations by city council to the infrastructure fund a little bit higher in the first three years of the model and then tempering down thereafter because of the additional increases from the add-on sales tax. And with that, then you can see that our change in fund balance ends up being a little bit more positive, kind of on a go-for basis. And you have sufficient ending fund balance available to allocate to your minimum 10%, contingency reserve as well as potential surpluses that could be allocated to increase the contingency reserve closer to the 17% desired levels by city council. As city manager had mentioned earlier in his presentation, this model actually takes into consideration because the add-on sales tax will be ramped in slowly, a progressive increase to a 17% contingency reserve. And then fiscal year 23, 24, you see additional ending fund balance available for potential strategic planning initiatives and that would be funds available for city council discretion. And those were built into the model in this expenditure section and starting in fiscal year 24, 25. So, any questions on this model before I come over to the last slide?
Just so that you can further explain the lines that say transfers out infrastructure fund, additional, transfers out infrastructure fund additional. So that means in this model that about $4 million that first year is going in addition to the infrastructure fund.
So right now, if you, if you see the add-on sales tax is about $5 million for fiscal year 2021, we assumed in the model that 50% of that add-on sales tax would automatically be transferred to the infrastructure fund. And that's that $2.5 million in fiscal year 2021. And then because there would be potential ending fund balance available for city council discretion, city council during the year, if the add-on sales tax measure is successful and then the estimated sales tax to be generated comes in a little bit higher, thereby enabling us to end with a much stronger ending fund balance. City council, we had built into the model, city council potentially redirecting some additional available discretionary general fund monies to the infrastructure fund above the 50% that was built into the ordinance.
And again, what we, what you don't see in there is any other kind of decision-making. So there's no increase for homelessness. There's no, you know, revamping of staff here. There's no other issues like that towards economic development. So we just.
I guess my point is that those two lines really show what you're assuming would go into infrastructure above and beyond what we do now, should the sales tax pass.
So if you can look at the previous model with no add-on sales tax, starting in 21, 22, we could potentially divert $75,000 to the infrastructure fund. So it's a significant disparity as to what the add-on sales tax measure enables the city to kind of prioritize.
Right. Yep. Thanks.
So the last slide is essentially a comparison graphically of the no add-on sales tax measure in comparison to the add-on sales tax measure. So in this graph, you can see what the potential ending fund balances would be between either model. We layered in the red dotted line what the 10% minimum reserve levels are. So as you can see with the no add-on sales tax, you can see that there is less and less funding available to essentially meet that minimum 10% and then what our 17% target reserve levels would look like. So with the no add-on sales tax, the projection is clearly not very positive. And then with the add-on sales tax, what it enables the city to do in terms of ensuring its financial and fiscal stability as we move forward. And with that, are there any other questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you, City Manager and Ellis and everybody who worked on this. This has been a really great presentation. I know we have very limited time. One of the reasons I, I asked for this initially is to hear from some of the longer-serving council members who've experienced the past and the cuts and the, and the struggle. And then as we're looking forward, I'd love to hear from Councilmember Whitaker, who's been on this for 10 years.
Yes, please do. And I mean, at, at the risk of stating the obvious, this seemed to be very much a campaign event. And that's why I was holding back my discussion because what we're really, this, as a study session, was really much more something trying to sell the sales tax. So those of us who oppose the sales tax, there are so many arguments to be stated in. in contrast to what we were given here tonight. As you look back four decades or so, year-to-year, city finances, what's missing from that is what was being put into infrastructure at the time. Deferred maintenance was used in large part, and that's why we're where we're at right now with our infrastructure, but that doesn't really show in the year-to-year comparisons. Second thing is, if you look back many years ago, full-time employment levels, FTE levels from years ago, we today do much more outside contracting as compared to back then. Back then, much of the labor in the city, much of the manpower and woman power in the city was because the city was handling a lot more of this itself. An example is tree trimming, but just one example of many. Another difference between now and back then is we have technology, which in the private sector saves large amounts of labor, and to the extent we have to assume over four decades here that the city has benefited from technological increases and improvements. Redevelopment, the problem with redevelopment was the way that it diverted money away, that it created redevelopment zones which didn't generate any more property taxes for the city or for the other entities, but diverted those into the redevelopment agency. Some cities really went crazy with that. City of Westminster made their entire city a redevelopment zone. So it has a very depressing impact on revenues from some directions, and it leads to distortions like the bidding wars that happened. Fullerton lost many of its auto dealerships, very large sales tax generators, because other local cities outbid these companies and actually lured them away from Fullerton. So that's part of the redevelopment wars, which happen when you have that redevelopment money to play with. What redevelopment did most of the time is take taxpayer money and subsidize certain activities. And it's a real plus that redevelopment is gone now. So many other arguments to be made, including the fact that if you look at the city's finances in isolation, you can paint a real dire picture what we're talking about here, and some of the challenges and the difficulties, especially with COVID and with where we're at now. But we're looking at the city in isolation here. Who you're looking to tax and fee and charge much more money are average residents and citizens and visitors to our city and small businesses, and they're suffering greatly through these economic downturns. In fact, as we look at times over those 40-plus years on the graph where revenues dropped, it was often the result of recessions, including a great recession, and the private sector suffered immeasurably compared to the adjustments that had to be made in government, be it city, county, state. We are now at a high level, a very high level in California on total taxes and fees and charges and permits and other forms of regulatory overkill. And so at a time when our economy, our entire fabric outside of government is suffering this burden, I would not be so willing or so ready to pile on, to actually add more to that problem. It's time, really, that we look at massive reform in government and not just the automatic click, 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 ratcheting up on costs and expenses all the time. It is high time to start looking at the actual expenditure side. What I saw here in this study session, with apologies to those, everyone did some fine work here and everything on it, but what I saw was a litany about chasing more revenue. It's all on the revenue side. This tends to be the case at every level of government. I've worked at county, I've worked at state, but it's always focusing on the revenue side of things.
But Mr. Whitaker, you've been on council for 10 years, and our roads are crap.
Yes.
So what cuts, everything you've stated was fantastic. Yeah, you've stated the obvious, but you've not given us any solutions in the last 10 years.
You wanted to hear from me, didn't you?
Yeah, but you're not, all you're doing is complaining.
Then listen to this. In 10 years on this council, I've been part of a functional majority for maybe a handful of months, and your votes and other votes over the years have contributed to where we're at now, so if there's a complaint about the city's policies, I'm not to blame on that one.
So you're blaming voters?
No, I'm blaming actions of the council, including this action now.
I'm sorry, but you had majority on council.
We're going to go ahead and give others the opportunity to talk tonight. I appreciate the debate, and it's going to have to continue.
I guess that few percent has to be the opposite side of things, then.
Absolutely. So Councilmember Silva, did you have anything you'd like to add?
I just wanted to thank the staff for putting this together and giving us a picture, you know, the way, depending on what you interpret it, but I think it's a good picture to look at, look at the two models and really allow us to figure out, to start thinking, what are we going to do come November, after November, given the possible outcome? But, you know, it doesn't look very good. I mean, but again, it's just food for thought for all of us, and we will get new council members in November, so it'll give them something to think about. But other than that, thank you, Ellis and your staff and City Manager.
Thanks, Councilmember Silva. Mayor Protem Florrie?
Well, to put it a little bit in perspective, there's a lot of us that live in this town that are old timers. We've bought our houses and lived in them for a very long time. My property taxes are $1,700 a year, and if the city gets 15.6% of that, that means that my contribution to the city is approximately $220 a year. And that pays for street sweeping, tree trimming, the community center, the museum center, the library, public safety, fire and police, and all the other services that I am able to take advantage of by virtue of the fact that I'm a resident in this city. That is simply not sustainable. It is not sustainable. And the one thing I do appreciate, Councilmember Whitaker's comments, particularly the note that our full-time employees are down because some of our services have had to be contracted out, and that is very true. Unfortunately, the fact of the matter is, is that the values of our homes have increased exponentially. Nobody questions that. Nobody questions the fact that we're paying a hell of a lot more for gas per gallon than we did in 1980 and 1990. Our revenues in this city have been extremely stagnant for many, many years. The majority of our city revenue comes from property taxes and sales taxes, and those have been very consistent, and they have not risen to the extent that the city expenditures have risen just over time in the normal course. One of the things that is missing from this conversation, Councilmember Whitaker, is this. I don't recall that you ever presented an alternative plan. You blame the council for its votes in the past, but the fact of the matter, you never prepared another path for us to follow, something that would make sense. And I think it's great to be able to sit there and criticize your former colleagues, but the fact of the matter is, is that I don't recall ever seeing something from you that was an alternative of any description, let alone a good one or a bad one.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Protem Florrie. I want to just, I would echo much of what Mayor Protem Florrie said. I want to just go back to the slide. It's not numbered, I'm sorry, but no sales tax scenario, and it starts with go forward with strategic planning as normal, right there. And this second, you know, point here about the fiscal sustainability review, and Councilman Zara asked, has that been done before? Why hasn't it been done? In my view, the reason that hasn't been done before is because that fiscal sustainability review means that you are going to fundamentally, you are going to fundamentally change service delivery and services. And throughout my time on this council over the last eight years, I've promoted many changes to service delivery and services that we provide, and selling of city assets like the Hunt Branch Library. I've floated going to the county for our library system. I really promoted and worked for a couple of years to merge the Brea and Fullerton Fire Department completely. And what, and my experience through all of that, that discussion of fundamental service delivery and service changes, is that this community wants things delivered, wants services delivered, and wants the services that they have now. And so I finally had to come to the realization that if we, as a city, value the partnerships with Muckenthaler, with the museum, I mean, we've all probably gotten close to 500 emails and postcards about reopening the museum, our Parks and Recreation Department, our Water Department, our Police Department, our Fire Department, the city assets that we have like Hunt Branch, in order to keep all that and continue to deliver services the way we're going to deliver it, we need more revenue. And the fairest way to get that revenue is 1.25% sales tax increase that all stays here in Fullerton. Right now, of course, only 1% of 7.75% stays here in Fullerton, but if the voters decide to pass the sales tax increase, that additional 1.25% all stays here and will enable us to do many things, including keep services being delivered in the way that this, the people of this city have told me over the last eight years, they want it delivered. So in my view, that's why we haven't taken the drastic step of doing a fiscal sustainability review. We have done what responsible government agencies do. We have done performance audits of various departments. We have trimmed every budget that we can and made as many staff cuts, actually more staff cuts than are responsible, because we're not able to deliver the services that we need to be delivering in the way people expect them to be. So I just wanted, I just felt pretty strongly, you know, that I wanted to explain that. And then I know it's just past 6:30, and we need to go into our open public session. But are there any last comments from other council members?
I'd like to make one last comment, if you don't mind, and I'll make it really brief. I know this is a tough time for everybody, but our city, our city needs revenue. This is what I've always believed, whether it's long-term economic development or increased revenue as the sales tax measure. As for our, the residents who are struggling financially, absolutely, but they are, they are more impacted, especially low-income families will be more impacted by reduction in services in library, in after-school programs, in the museum. When they're hit a pothole and they can't fix their car and go do grocery shopping or go to work, that is more impactful than just a few cents. So I think that, I've always believed, revenue is our problem. Cuts, cuts, cuts have happened over the last decade, and then what did it get us? Bad roads and declining services, and now we're struggling with even public safety. So thank you, Mr. Whitaker, for 10 years of service.
You know, Madam Mayor, to sustain personal attacks from Councilman Zara and also from Mayor Protem Florrie, and to have no ability to return fire is an outrageous thing, in my opinion. It's outrageous to run this long commercial of a campaign type for a city measure, and Mayor Protem Florrie launched into a Prop 13 thing, which is a state proposition right now at this ballot on November 3rd. So I think that you've all danced very dangerously close to the line when it comes to not utilizing taxpayer dollars to try to pass a political measure. And then to shut down my ability to return fire when I'm getting personal attacks by the fellow council members, I just think that's reprehensible. I really do.
Thanks. So we're going to go ahead and...
Mayor, just one last, I just want to acknowledge you, because you have taken those tough, made those tough calls about doing some things differently, and they have been followed through, so I do want to acknowledge you on that, taking that kind of action and, so, because that has been needed, and when you mentioned it, yeah, you were one of the few that got a lot of heat for trying to outsourced the library, but, you know, you've been thinking about how to change things, so just want to acknowledge you for that.
I appreciate that, thanks. Let's see, so we do need to move into our regular meeting here, and so I think we will go ahead and adjourn the study session. Of course, it's a much longer discussion that we'll all continue to have, but I too appreciate Ellis, Mr. City Manager, those of you from the Finance Department who are here for preparing that study session tonight, and I think people deserve to know what the real situation is, so thanks so much for giving us those facts this evening. And then with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the study session and reconvene as the City of Fullerton City Council in our regular meeting.